Good, thank you. We've got a minute more and then we'll get started. Okay, good evening to everyone and welcome to everyone who's joined us for the school districts. Wapaka regular monthly meeting for March 24th. First of all, for those that may be streaming or watching the feed on the city TV station, that may not be familiar with our format. Our monthly meetings, we normally begin with a comment from the president followed by the presidential allegiance, then the call to order. So I'm not calling to order quite as of yet. My comments are normally quite brief, but under the circumstances, I'll take just a little more time this evening. This is the first time the Board of Education has held a meeting utilizing a video conference and teleconferencing platform. With that, we thank our IT staff for all the work they put into this to prepare us for this. Hopefully, all the signals are sound and clear and the members of the board are able to operate accordingly from their remote places. Based on discussions with legal counsel, we believe we've done all that is needed to meet the open meeting laws. And I would also like to thank in addition to our IT staff, the city for helping us out in being able to play this for those that wish to watch that way. This is an unprecedented and difficult time that is challenging in a myriad of ways. I could not be more proud of the common family as the district planned for and implemented the delivery of education through a continuation of learning plan. On behalf of the Board of Education, I wish to express our gratitude to the core team that spent long days over spring break developing our distance learning plan, the educators that built lesson plans and needed to deliver those plans to our students in a new way, to our food service team who has embraced our need to get meals to our students, our medical staff who kept the health and safety of our students, and staff at the forefront of our minds throughout the planning process, and our IT department again, and other members of the district team that contributed to the district's efforts, not only to develop and implement our continuation of education plan, but to also provide support to our students and their families in any way possible. The amount of community engagement as we traverse this period has been amazing and heartwarming. People have volunteered to take groceries to people who are at risk or homebound. Medical and other healthcare professionals, as well as essential service providers, are working extended hours in preparation for what may come our way. Law enforcement and first responders not only continue their daily activities on our behalf, but plan for additional challenges that may lie ahead. The individuals and food service industry, as well as our grocers, are doing incredible things to attempt to keep us well-stocked. Quite honestly, they're not words that can adequately express our thanks for the support, volunteerism, and commitment that we're seeing from so many people, not just for the district, but for our entire community. I would ask that you please take care of yourselves, your families, and those that need assistance. With that, I'd like to ask those at home to please join us here as we say pledge allegiance. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under our Thank you. With that, I will take a roll call. And I will actually ask for the response. I know we did a test earlier, but roll call.
Steve Hackett?
Here.
Betty Mannion?
Here, here.
Pat Ferrer?
Here.
Mark Polbisky?
Here.
Sandy Robinson?
Here.
Dale Belt?
Here.
Steve Johnson?
Here. With the record reflect all are present in one fashion or another. I would look for a motion to approve Resolution 032420-1 suspending the rules to the contrary slash to the board members can attend meetings electronically until determined otherwise.
So move Sandy Robinson.
Are here. Motion. Motion by Sandy, second by the chief. Any discussion? All right, we will do all of our votes by roll call because otherwise it could become problematic. Would that roll call?
Steve Hackett?
Here. Hi.
Betty Mannion?
Yes.
Pat Ferrer?
Hi.
Mark Polbisky?
Yes.
Sandy Robinson?
Yes.
Dale Belt?
Yes.
Steve Johnson?
Yes. With that, I will ask if there is a motion to waive the public comment section of our meeting. For those that may be watching and unaware, normally we have a segment of our agenda set up for public comment, but under the circumstances, it would be difficult to do. If this motion does pass, we will be reemphasizing your abilities to the school board with any thoughts or concerns, questions you may have, or the school administration. Motion by Mark?
Second by Sandy.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Steve Hackett?
Hi.
Betty Mannion?
Yes.
Pat Ferrer? Pat Ferrer?
Hi.
Mark Polbisky?
Hi.
Sandy Robinson?
Yes.
Dale Belt?
Hi.
Steve Johnson?
Hi, thank you very much. And now for the approve the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
That was motion by Betty and second by?
Fair.
Pat, thank you. Any discussion? There being none, roll call.
Steve Hackett? Steve Hackett?
Steve Hackett, if you can unmute, we're taking a vote on the approval of the agenda. If you can hear us okay. Okay, let's go to them.
Betty Mannion?
Yes.
Pat Ferrer?
Hi.
Mark Polbisky?
Hi.
Sandy Robinson?
Yes.
Dale Belt? Dale, Belt?
Hi.
Yes, I just noticed one phone line just dropped off, so he might be redialing. Okay, well, motion does carry. We'll go on to the approval of the minutes, first of the February 25th, 2020 regular board meeting. Do I have a motion?
Yes, I would move approval.
Motion by Sandy, second by Dale.
Correct.
Any discussion or corrections? Roll call. Actually, you know what? In order to expedite this, I'm going to also, I will take if someone would like to make it a group motion for the February 25th, March 5th, and March 15th meetings. And then we can do a single roll call, all three.
I'm back, by the way.
Yes, I would amend my motion to include both.
Okay, amended motion, Dale is your second?
Second.
Okay, motion and second to approve for February 25th, March 5th, and March 15th meetings of board. Any discussion or corrections? Roll call.
Steve Hackett?
Hi.
Betty Mannion?
Could unmute yourself, Betty.
Sorry, sorry, yes, yes, yes.
Okay, that's three yeses.
That's the delay.
Pat Ferrer?
Pat Ferrer?
Mark Polbisky?
Yes.
Sandy Robinson?
Yes.
Dale Belt?
Yes.
Steve Johnson?
Yes. Motion carries by a majority. Pat, if you have issue, once you get back, please let us know. Communications, I will turn this off to Ms. Busari.
We had two communications, one from Kevin and Lisa Micklecheck, I believe you pronounce it.
I'm back on.
What this is, is a thank you for the sympathy card, monetary donation, and then one from Mary thanking the district for making a donation to the Wapaka High School Scholarship Foundation in memory of her father. Then we have I was just gonna mention how proudly I've been honoring Julie Pinkritt for the 1920 Light Change Year of the Year Award. Congratulations, Julie. Do you want me to go right into my report, please?
Yes, if you would, please.
So since our last school board meeting in February, our lives, both professionally and personal, have changed dramatically. At the same time, our entire staff has been doing a tremendous job of adjusting for our temporary new normal. It's important for everyone to know that true collaboration and teamwork is taking place across our entire district. This includes our core team, the administrative team, individual building teams that include food service, building and grounds, our district office, the PLC or professional learning communities, our ILT teams, our instructional leadership teams, our grade level and subject area teams, our technology teams, every team that we have. And when I say collaboration, I'm referring to collaborative leadership, where people from a variety of roles, such as our core team and principals, food service, nursing, building and grounds, activities, all met together. There were no silos, and information was shared organically, and everyone took responsibility for the whole of our district. Diversity of opinion was sought out to solve problems and to capitalize on opportunities. It was an exercise in engaging our collective intelligence and leadership where we operated through high-quality conversations. Our level of success is based on creating an environment of trust, mutual respect, and a shared agreement in our goals, mission, and vision. Our focus is on relationships as well as positive outcomes. Last week, Aaron Jensen and I were interviewed by the city radio and TV station, giving updates from both the city perspective and the school district perspective. This week, that is going to occur again tomorrow, and I anticipate this will occur weekly into the near future here. I've got a little update from a variety of different departments across our district. First is regarding district technology. The district was able to provide take-home devices for all students, grades three through 12. Through the hard work of our social workers, we were able to reach out to families that need internet access and provide families with options. These options included free internet through Spectrum and district-provided hotspots. Working with US Cellular in the district was able to receive 75 hotspots, along with the 15 hotspots that the district already had on site. We are able to provide access to internet access to our community. The technology integration specialists, along with our librarians, have been amazing, helping move our staff and students online. They've provided countless hours in support for staff to help produce high-quality online learning opportunities for our students. They continue to provide support, produce tutorials, and provide a platform for testing before students see the product. They've moved mountains in a very short time. Matt Warner and Stephen Bowman have been amazing, have done an amazing job during this time, working in the background to create VPNs, which are virtual private networks, and making sure our technology systems are able to continue working during this difficult time. A VPN allows us to create a secure connection to another network over the internet so that people can work remotely from home. Teachers and aides worked hard last week to learn about the new delivery methods and did a very nice job of preparing materials for students, both electronically and paper copies. Teachers have been told to let principals know if they don't hear from students at least once per week, that we will work with student services team members to figure out what's actually going on and try to get them engaged. Also, teacher flexibility is a key. Many of our teachers' daycare circumstances have changed dramatically. Continuation of certain rituals, videos shared with students and parents, weekly emails to principals, and principals emailing staff and families continue to keep the rituals in place. As you know, we're in our third year of a one-to-one internet device makeup. This has prepared our students, families, and staff to be better prepared for an event that we currently are in. A variety of online resources have been common with resource purchases over the last several years. The work of our technology integration specialists, librarians, and MLSS coaches have been outstanding. We have 365 families right now that have responded to our initial device internet survey from early last week. The initial family survey results were narrowed down to 57 families. Forty-nine hotspots have been issued to families, and Student Services continues to work with the remaining eight families on getting them what they need. From Student Services, staff are continuing to reach out to families to assist in meeting needs and continuing relationships with students. This includes school counselors, school nurses, school psychologists, and school social workers. Relationships do matter. Special education staff met with teachers and therapists, that's OT, PT, and SLPs, last week in preparation for a continuation of learning plan to provide special education services to the greatest extent that we can. Weekly virtual meetings with Student Services and Special Education staff are taking place to provide updates on compliance changes for students with disabilities. Daily administration meetings started on March 12th that include food service, transportation, building, grounds, facilities, school nursing, our core team, and building administration. I believe also a board representative from our board president was there. Daily communication with families and staff began on March 12th and continued through March 20th through IC Messenger, Facebook, email, and phone calls. Principals have been having weekly virtual meetings with staff. The core team will continue daily virtual meetings. Weekly meetings with principals will start the week of March 30th. That will include principals plus core team and principals plus the PLC teams. Building staff, including principals, are all working remotely, starting as of yesterday, March 23rd. Teachers have been told to let principals know if they don't hear from students at least once per week, that we will work with our student service team members to figure out what's going on. Teacher flexibility is key, and I did hit on also the continuation of certain rituals. Also, the school district of Wapaka has a COVID-19 webpage that's attached to our district webpage, if you look at the top of our district webpage. Food service has been working diligently as well. We have set single points of contact for food service and technology. Food service pickups and deliveries started on Monday, the 23rd, yesterday, between 10:30 and 12:30 at the high school and the WLC. We currently have 281 students receiving meals from our food service program. Students receive that day's lunch, as well as the next day's breakfast. Home deliveries are up to 21 families, including 84 students, using three go-right-way vans. High school pickup for meals includes 73 students, and we have 124 students receiving meals at the WLC site. Also, some information from the Foundation of Rural Housing. Our social workers had a conversation with representatives from the Foundation of Rural Housing. They run several programs. One is called HomeNet. HomeNet assists with internet connection bills and hotspots for rural communities. The representative said Wapaka is doing way better with their program for hotspots and internet compared to other districts that they spoke with. People with internet through a provider will eventually have to pay the bill after the free and the grace period ends, including the ones with charter. They can also, this Foundation for Rural Housing can also help pay internet and hotspot costs for anyone who is unable to pay and that has a school need. They're interested in meeting with school district representatives, especially our social workers, to assist with funding to continue internet and hotspot connections for families in need, and the state is also very interested in keeping connections going for students. The last part here I just want to touch base on revolves, involves waivers. Most of the core team participated in a webinar with our assistant state superintendent of public instruction, Mike Thompson, today, and we understand that we will be able to apply for a waiver at any time soon to waive the minutes of mandatory hours of instruction. So to do so, the first step that we have to do as a school district board is to have a public meeting that allows for a public comment here, period, and then, of course, for board action to approve the administration to request this waiver from the DPI. It's a fairly simple process. The steps are all outlined on the DPI website, and when you look at the actual waiver application process, we basically need to have the date of when the board gives administration this approval, and when that hearing took place, and basically, we're told that that will be granted from the DPI. And that's all I have. I know this is a lengthy report, but we've had a lot going on here these last several weeks. And so I'm just gonna end, as all of the communications have been ending and starting, actually. We're all in this together, and we've got this. Does anybody have any questions on the administrator's report?
Any questions from members of the board? I do know we have other members of administration, or Dale, did you just wave?
Yeah.
Yeah, what timeline did Mike Thompson give you on having to have that meeting?
There was no rush, Dale. He said we could do it ASAP or wait longer. As the core team talked about it, we kind of concur that we would rather act on it sooner rather than later. So at some point, I think we're either going to have a committee meeting to discuss it if the board feels that there's a need to have a larger discussion. Otherwise, we would add it to either the next regular board meeting or have a special board meeting in regards to that. We're hoping to look at this sometime after the March 30th building and grounds committee meeting that we have scheduled.
Thank you.
I guess my one request would be that we do reach out to council to see if their interpretation of the mandate for an open meeting can be satisfied under the current situation, and if so, how it can be satisfied without going through any thing that would be contrary to the governor's directive on size of group meetings, et cetera, et cetera.
And just for point of clarification, we'd apply for a waiver, it's a general waiver, but with the reality of this past week not having class to get learning, the continuation of learning plan in place moving forward. We would still continue with the continuation of learning plan for as long as necessary, but again, the waiver would really be to cover ourselves for last week's absences of classes when our school calendar had indicated that there would have been classes last week.
Very good. That may have been slightly lengthy. I do know we have other meetings of administration here. Is there anyone else that would like to provide the board with any updates that we haven't already had, be they in this room six feet apart, or I do see some that are online as well? Okay, well, again, our thanks to everyone, administration and educators, and thank you for that update. We'll move on to monitoring.
Yeah, we'll turn that over to our director of instruction technology, Steve Tomcheski.
Good evening, everybody. Hopefully, you got the packet ahead of time, weeks ago probably, where it has more, a much more detailed plan. So really, what this is, is just monitoring is for going forward the next couple of years. Okay, Mark, go forward. There you go. All right, so the mission statement was started before I got here. My predecessor had some work on it that we were doing with the coaches and the librarians already, so sometimes we just kind of use with it, and it basically is just kind of tying more of our mission statement into the district's mission statement. For the summary, you know, we're looking at probably the next five years, and some things have changed in the last couple of weeks, so it makes this even more obsolete now than it was a week ago. But when we look at that, there's some things we have to look closely at, and currently we're looking, we replaced all the teacher devices at the high school level, so those have been replaced. But we have to start looking at replacing a bunch of our elementary staff devices. A lot of them are getting pretty old, and the middle school devices, and so we've been working with different staff in those buildings to make that happen. We installed new printers throughout the district last summer. We used a product called PaperCut, so people now badge in to get their print jobs. And then we also moved all of our devices from Windows 7 to Windows 10, since Windows 7 is no longer supported. For our technology integration, we continue to have that high level of technology integration with our teachers throughout the district. Having technology integration specialists and library media specialists at each level definitely has been a great thing. Our Tech Camp 2019 was a success, and everybody finds that professional development very, very beneficial. When we look at our technology refresh strategy, one of the things Ron wanted me to do was like, how are we gonna do this going forward? And so when we look at these things, we have to make sure that we have these things that are cost-effective, that they're organized, and that we're targeting things. So we look at what those different pieces are, and we use different pieces all along the lines to make sure that we have what we need. One of the things we worked on and we'll continue to work on is having that full inventory of what we all have as the district. We bought a resource manager so that way we can track our assets. We are tracked all the way through from our middle school up, and the next couple of weeks will give us a chance to finish some other things we're doing. One of the things with my refresh strategy that I really wanted to emphasize in working with Carl and the business office was that we should really be replacing 20% of our things every single year to get into that timeframe of every five years, that rotation, so that way we don't get stuck kind of where we are now, where we have a bunch of older devices, and we're just, we need to replace them quicker than we probably had to. So the need was to create an operational budget, and that was kind of my background is those operational pieces, so that way we know every single year I can give to Carl and say, hey, Carl, this is what I need, this is what it looks like going forward, so we can, we can work together and have that goal. So we did is we formed building So we did is we formed building level teams. This way, they could see what we have done and where we want to go, so I can understand where elementary wants to go versus where the high school wants to go. Started to form that close relationship with the director of teaching and learning, so that way when we buy software, we understand that it supports the curriculum and vice versa. When teachers want to buy curriculum, that software base that it goes through me, so that way they understand that, yes, it works together, yes, we can support it. We wanted to make sure we work with those building principals, understand like how we got to where we were and why everything was moved to that central approach. And we need to make sure we start to work on that correct licensure, so that way when we buy one thing, we don't share it, that we're following the guidelines that have been set forth. So if it says we've got to have a license for every single person, we need to buy it for every single person. So in the packet you got, this kind of explains what my, my thoughts were as far as a rotation. So Chromebooks every year would be replaced at the fifth and ninth grade level. A lot of that we laid out last year already, and you have a bunch of that material. We're going to switch to teacher laptop moving forward. And, and there were some pieces in there that when we went through with the buildings, it made more sense, because currently they had a desktop that had to be replaced, and a lot of them had older Chromebooks that needed to be replaced. So when we ran the numbers, it was, it's just cheaper for us and probably a better choice to go to a laptop device with a bigger monitor station. And anybody that's seen those, if you want to stop into the district administrative office and some of the other places, we have that set up. So the teachers have seen that, they're all on board. We wanted to make sure our interactive boards, which were brought through many different grants and building, buildings throughout the year, that we start to phase those out. They're getting pretty old. We want to make sure that we have a rotation in place, so we don't run into that. We want to make sure projectors, we're going to start phasing projectors, all what it looks like, and you can kind of see these pieces as they go through. But we also wanted to make sure that we have special items on there. It's going to be a case by case. So if something comes up and they're like, wow, this is really amazing stuff, we want to do that, that we do have that opportunity to look at that. The district has done a great job with E-Rate throughout the years, so I want to give Carl and our E-Rate specialist that we work with a big thank you. They've done a great job on that backside, so that way our infrastructure is really good. What we've also done now is we've combined the Teach grant with the E-Rate, so as we move forward with those pieces, those items will be covered at 100% versus just that 70%. And we can kind of move things even further down the line. One of the things with grants, and this is a personal philosophy, is that grants are great things, and, but they don't, they should never be used to, to buy something we can't sustain. So if we're going to use grants, I think that should be making sure that we're using that to supplement what we're already capable of doing. When we go down to the budget, these are just recommendations. We talked about removing the staff to a laptop device. We moved to incorporate software as essential and required for effective teaching curriculum, standardized equipment on a grade level. So if you're an elementary student or teacher and you're in a first grade, when you go to another first grade teacher, the same stuff is in there. Just like if you're at the high school and a science teacher, your science room is set up the same as the science room right across the hall from you, so you're not having to learn multiple things. And you can see right here, we moved towards that infrastructure to move towards a portal device. That's kind of the goal at the end of the day. We have some big things that we're working on, so students would open up their Chromebooks, and they would have all their things that they would need for that grade level, right there on their screen, almost like a, like a touchscreen phone. And then when you look at the budget, you've seen all these are numbers you have in there. This is kind of that projection going forward. These are some numbers that, that do currently what we pay, things we do. And you can see, we start to add the 5% every couple of years, because technology is never getting cheaper, it seems, for a lot of the things we want to do. And the next year is going to be very interesting when we start to talk about some of the delays that are going to happen. And that's what these sheets are. I would say they're really solid for the next two to three years. After that four and five years, you know, some things are locked in when the prices don't change, but some things are always going to change. We talked about capital items. Next year, we have to buy $70,000 worth of camera licensure that has to be redone, so that goes in your capital items. And the replacement cycle, this is going to be for our staff devices, for our boards, everything we've got moving forward. Once you go through the entire budget, you can see, and you probably don't know this, but make Carl smile a little bit, is that really doesn't increase my budget for the next three years. So it kind of leaves it what it currently is and without adding extra cost to it. And then after that third year, you'd have to project in that 5% increase. And this sheet, you should have seen last year a couple of times, this is our, our lease forecast as we move to a, of fifth graders get new ones and ninth graders also get ones. And we, we lease our Chromebooks. They're basically throwaway devices after three or four, after four or five years, because their batteries start to go bad. So owning them, they would just sit somewhere. So by leasing them, we're able to, to do that effectively without having to sustain a huge cost. And that's what I got for you. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Any questions for Steve?
I have a question. Steve, does that mean that we won't have like smart boards or anything in the classroom anymore?
No, what we did is we actually switched from smart boards. So if you go into the WLC, which you can't right now, but when, when you can, I really want you to, because K through 1, we've gone to an interactive TV board. So it's device agnostic, so they can use whatever they want to. So if they want to use Google Slides or PowerPoint or Smart, they can use anything on that board. And then we're getting rid of the projectors. And really, TVs have come down so far on much in cost that when we ran the numbers, it was, it was a much better choice to go this way. Kids can see better, we don't have to turn lights off, you can have the lights on, and it runs with anything, and it's updatable for many years to come.
I have a question also.
I'm sorry.
Yes, your question?
Oh, yeah. I have one comment, Steve. As many, as many you know, I was involved in technology coordinating for 26 years and long-range plans, just like Steve put together. Looking at his plan, it is solid, well-thought-out, and I tell you what, it couldn't have been put together better than that, Steve. Thanks for all the work. I can see where you're going with this, and I commend you.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Yes.
Sorry, any?
I have a question. Yes, and I will echo what Mark just said to compliment the work, the very solid work that you have done. You mentioned in the technology mission statement collaborating with adult literacy providers, and I'm really interested. You mentioned collaboration. That sounded like it was beyond the school district boundaries. And I wondered if you could tell us a little bit more about the work that you do in that area?
Well, one of the neat things that the district has done before I even got here was they started working with the public library. And so I also sit on that board. And so to see some of the things that like PEG is doing, and some of the things they're rolling out with Sue Abrahamson, we just got a grant that we wrote with them to make one of the rooms in the high school, a more of a maker space learning area that the public library will be working in. And so it was a $10,000 grant that was awarded to them. So they're going to be putting $10,000 into our building for items that they're going to be doing. And then we're going to, over the next couple of years, working with the business department, we're going to match that, but obviously, it's going to be multiple years, where we're going to be able to put some furniture in there, and we do carpets and some of these pieces. So that'll be, that's that collaboration piece when we talk about bringing the public library into our building that's going to offer programs after hours and during our summer with their staff.
That sounds fantastic.
Other questions or comments?
One last thing before I mute myself, which is probably a good thing, is I just want to say thank you to Carl. I mean, working with him has been great on this, because that's not going to, I couldn't put this together without having it run past him. So I just want to thank his department for working with me on that.
Very good. And again, our gratitude to you and the entire IT staff for everything that you have done to enable us to get into this environment of distance learning. I know it puts you on a spot rather quickly. Fortunately, as you said, we did have a lot of our students prepared with Chromebooks, but I know it took a lot of work behind the scenes that nobody may fully understand, appreciate, or be aware of. So thank you with all sincerity to you and your staff. With that, we'll move on to board reports. The first item on the agenda is the appointment of a representative to the WHS Scholarship Foundation Committee. I have had interest expressed by Mr. Felt, and I have indicated to him that I would certainly appreciate his participation. I know we've had other board members involved with that in the past. I don't know if they would be open to more than one, but I would like to, without objection, appoint Dale Felt to be our WHS Scholarship Foundation Committee Representative.
Thanks. And just so you know that I'm also on the, the Scholarship Foundation Board. So that kind of fit in real nice right now for us.
Anyone that has specific interest, if you would like to get in touch with me, we can see if they can have more than one involved.
Steve, I just want to say at this point, as part of that foundation, the Wapaka School District School Board gives two scholarships every year, and I'm the contact person for that. So I did let Linda Casera know that, once again, the board is delighted to give those two scholarships to two worthy high school graduating seniors. And so she was delighted that we are doing that. So thanks to the board and Linda and, and that foundation board for all the hard work they do. That is really something to gather all those resumes and information.
Very good. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Dale, for being willing to do that on behalf of the board. With that, we move into upcoming meetings and other activities. We have the March 30th, 2020 Building and Grounds Committee meeting at 10:00 AM. Again, that will be held via technical links such as this. We will get you the information and links in order to attend April 6th, the School Board and CEC Governance Council Retreat. Based on current information from the governor, that will likely be delayed. So we will make sure that our postings are up to date and keep you informed on that. April 7th is the election day. I'm not sure how everything that's going on will impact that. I would encourage everyone to consider getting absentee ballots and voting that way. I am doing so early enough so that your vote can be counted sometime before June. And then finally, our next regular board meeting is April 14th at 5:15. With that, the next item on the agenda is the Personnel Committee. Betty, are you in a position to be able to present that section?
Well, the Personnel Committee was scheduled to meet on March 23rd, and then the meeting date got changed to March 5th. So unfortunately, I had already made plans to be out of the country at that point. So Pat Fear, who is a committee member, took over as moderator of that meeting. So I'm going to ask that Pat would make his report, talk about this report to the board here tonight.
My apologies for throwing you out there. I forgot that he had that meeting. Pat, are you able to present for us? Hope his phone number is still on.
Yeah, he's on, he unmuted.
Okay, Pat, can you hear us?
He muted.
Is he unmuted?
Yeah, he's unmuted.
Pat, can you hear us?
He's going to call in again.
Okay, we'll take just a moment and see if he can log back in.
Otherwise, I'm, I think I can talk about it.
Let's give him just a moment.
Okay, can you hear me now?
We can, thank you, sir.
Oh, sorry, I, my phone has been cutting in and out a little, but, okay. We met, as Betty said, and we have four recommendations from the committee. Before, unfortunately, I think we're going to have to take each individually as far as a vote, because they're not really related. Before I read them and we get into that, I just wanted to know if Mark Clayton, are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Is there any, are there any changes or update to any of these motions before we start?
There is not, no.
Okay, good. Well, then, the committee met, and I'm going to go through with the recommendations. The first one is on speech and language services for the 2021 school year. And a motion was made and brought, bringing forth to the full board here that we discontinue and non-renew the speech and language therapy services contracted with CECA 5 and the 66.03 agreement with Wyegu Fremont School District. And in turn, we would hire a 1.0 or full-time equivalent speech-language pathologist for the school district of Wapaka. And that would be in the form of a motion.
Okay, this being a motion by the committee, it does not require a second? Any discussion?
Yes, I would like to say that I see advantage of this is that we would be getting two additional days per week of a speech pathologist. So while it will cost the district more money, I think in the long run, it's so worth it to be able to have a speech pathologist in our district, two more full days a week.
You may not be able to see it, Betty, but there are a lot of heads around this table that are nodding in agreement with you. Other comments or questions? Roll call?
Steve Hackett?
Hi.
Betty Mannion?
Yes.
Pat there?
Hi.
Mark Holbisky?
Hi.
Sandy Robinson?
Yes.
Dale Felt?
Yes.
Steve Johnson?
Okay, Pat?
Okay, the next recommendation made by the committee was to accept and support the administration's recommendations as presented for the next school year, and we would make that in the form of a motion.
Okay, with regard to district staffing?
Yes.
Being a motion of the committee, it needs no second. Is there any discussion? Roll call?
Steve Hackett?
Hi.
Betty Mannion?
Yes, yes.
Pat there?
Hi.
Michael Bitzke?
Yes.
Sandy Robinson?
Yes.
Dale Felt?
Yes.
Steve Johnson?
Yes. Next was the recommendation on the 2021 CECA 5 Services Contract.
Yes, the committee recommend the 2021 CECA 5 Services Contract be accepted, and we would make that in the form of a motion.
Okay. Being a motion coming from committee, it does not require a second. Is there any discussion? Roll call?
Steve Hackett?
Hi.
Betty Mannion?
Yes.
Pat there?
Hi.
Mark Holbisky?
Hi.
Sandy Robinson?
Yes.
Dale Felt?
Yes.
Steve Johnson?
Yes.
And our final recommendation has to do with substitute teacher pay. We had quite a lengthy discussion on this, and the board is, I'm sorry, the committee is recommending to increase the substitute teacher daily pay from, by $10 per day from $100 to $110 per day effective April the 1st of this year.
That being a committee recommendation that needs no second, is there any discussion?
Yes, I would just say I, I think this is really a good Um, yes, I would just say I, I think this is really a good move because I know getting substitute teachers is really difficult. So while $10, $10 might not seem like a lot, it, I don't know if it could be a game changer, but it certainly could help, um, with our, our lack of being able to get substitutes.
Can I make one comment on that?
Mm-hmm.
Um, uh, and maybe this is for Ron. Uh, this seems to be, uh, a recommendation that I, I suspect we're going to vote on here in a second, but is there any way that this recommendation on, uh, our substitute pay and, and for that matter, substitute, are they involved at all in the situation that we're involved with now with our distance learning?
No, they are not, uh, Pat.
Okay.
We, we do have a one long-term sub, but that's a long-term sub and they get paid differently anyway.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Was there another question?
No.
Okay. Pat, if you haven't muted, uh, uh, mention for those that were not in the meeting or in attendance, uh, that we did receive comparables.
Is that correct? We did.
Okay. Uh, for everyone's identification, uh, we did receive comparables from surrounding districts, uh, as well as a larger cross-section of the CISA. So, uh, this is not just an arbitrary move. It does not put us at the high end, um, but it certainly puts us more in line with where many districts are or from what we've heard where they are going shortly. So with that, uh, roll call?
Steve Hackett?
Hi.
Mannion?
Yes.
Pat there?
Hi.
Mark Obitsky?
Hi.
Sandy Robinson?
Yes.
Dale Felt?
Yes.
Steve Johnson?
Yes. Anything else, Pat?
No, that's it from the committee.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir. Next item on the agenda, under administration, we have a couple of, uh, resolutions.
Do you want me to talk about that? First resolution is to authorize the superintendent to make efforts to retain staff and pay status and work to the greatest degree possible consistent with the law and providing a fair return to the district. In this language, you've been working with legal counsel on.
I'm quite certain everyone, uh, is well aware of this resolution. We've been talking about it, uh, at various times through the, uh, crisis, uh, during the pandemic, uh, issue. Um, any discussion?
I would like to make a motion to approve.
That was motion to approve by Steve?
Yes.
Second.
Second by Sandy?
Yes.
Any discussion? All in favor? I'm sorry. I'm so used to it. All in favor. Roll call, please.
Steve Hackett?
Hi.
Betty Mannion?
Yes.
Pat there?
Hi.
Obitsky?
Hi.
Sandy Robinson?
Yes.
Dale Felt?
Yes.
Steve Johnson?
Yes.
The next, uh, resolution?
This is to authorize the superintendent to work with vendors so as to effectively continue services to the greatest degree possible, consistent with the law, as well as in providing a fair return to the district.
Okay. Uh, again, uh, we have talked about this, uh, in the past. Obviously this is very important to us to, number one, keep that relationship to, number two, uh, bring their services to the benefit of our students and their families. Um, is there, are there any questions or discussion?
Shall move for approval.
Move, motion for approval? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion or questions? Roll call?
Steve Hackett?
Hi.
Betty Mannion?
Yes.
Pat there?
Hi.
Hi.
Sandy Robinson?
Yes.
Dale Felt?
Yes.
Steve Johnson?
Yes. With that, we now have three resolutions. Uh, I have signed them. We have to also get the signatures of the treasurer and the clerk when you have the opportunity. Um, they have passed their record. We do not need your signatures immediately. Again, with everything going on, we're not sure what even district administrations availability will be after, uh, eight o'clock tomorrow morning, based on Governor Evers', uh, orders. So, um, we will hold that in the office for a time that you can come in to sign. Uh, the next item under administration is a CISA V rental agreement for the 2021 year.
I'm going to turn that over to Carl.
Um, as you know, the district office, old district offices is being rented by CISA V for the past few years. And this agreement is just an upgrade from $36,000 last fiscal year to $37,000 this fiscal year. So there's a slight adjustment in this contract itself.
Shall move for approval?
Motion for approval and a second.
Second.
Motion and two seconds. Any discussion? Roll call?
Steve Hackett?
Roll call, Steve Hackett?
Betty Mannion?
Yes.
Pat there?
Hi.
Mark Obitsky?
Hi.
Sandy Robinson?
Yes.
Dale Felt?
Yes.
Steve Johnson?
Yes. I just noticed that, uh, Steve just left the meeting. I anticipate he'll be calling back in, uh, momentarily. And since the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, I will hopefully wait for him to come back in so he can vote on that as well.
He just joined.
He just joined. Okay. Steve, are you on?
Hello?
Hello, Steve. Okay. We just took a roll call on the CISA V rental agreement. Are you in favor?
I, I, yes.
Okay. Motion carries. Uh, we move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Don't move.
Motion by, second by.
Betty.
Okay. Any discussion? Roll call?
Steve Hackett?
Hi.
Betty Mannion?
Yes.
Pat there?
Hi.
Mark Obitsky?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi. Yes.
Sandy Robinson?
Yes.
Dale Felt?
Yes.
Steve Johnson?
Yes. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion to adjourn.
Two, two motions to adjourn. Do we have two seconds?
Second.
Second.
Three seconds. Two motions in three seconds. We'll take a roll call to adjourn.
Steve Hackett?
Hi.
Betty Mannion?
Yes.
Pat there?
Hi.
Mark Obitsky?
Hi.
Sandy Robinson?
Yes.
Dale Felt?
Yes.
Steve Johnson?
Yes. And my, my record reflect that Mark's, uh, vote in favor was with a thumbs up as well. I could see on the camera. So thank you, everyone. Uh, this will get smoother if we have to continue to meet this way. I appreciate everybody's, uh, attendance, patience, and we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stop the recording and livestream, but leave the meeting open.